We will continue from there because you know I have one session and I want to just give as much as it is possible. So that you know you can understand the car in Lenny Kertada Purindu Gundo Varkila or Marudal Oondaguna. Parang Deva Warthai Nama Iridiyatila Poonada Tha Namaarudal Oondaa. Adhaa a secret Deva Warthai Iridiyatuk Poonaa. See when you say I believe. Idhu Viswasa Kiringla for example Psalm 23. Alladu Manapadama Sodhido. Yara Otthirudas Psalm 23 Tiri Thiriyada Alanga? Irugue Muddiyadu Psalm 23 Tiri Na The Lord Is My Shepherd. You just take that one statement, The Lord is my shepherd. Do you believe it? Everybody will say I believe it. If you say I believe it, then what is your problem? That one statement is enough to iron out flush out every worry, every fear, every anxiety, every uncertainty out of your life because he is my shepherd. Right? That means I am his sheep. See many times we think we believe. That's when you need to understand, I began to understand this. Lord, I believe this when I read the Bible, I you know, I believe this. But what I am actually doing is I am actually mentally agreeing to it. It has not become a hard belief. That is the difference between mental belief and heart belief. See mental belief is you understand, you read something. If you are good in English, you understand English better. If you good in Telugu Tamil, you read that particular language, particular Bible and you intellectually grasp the information and you say, okay, I can agree with this statement. So we think I believe. No, that's when I discovered you don't believe it that way. The heart belief takes time because the heart does not believe information like the way mind believes information. The heart doesn't understand language. There's only one language the heart understands. The language of pictures. The heart does not understand English or Tamil. See when you read Psalm 23, say The Lord is my shepherd. The heart does not understand what that is. But the moment you close your eyes and see a picture of the shepherd leading you with the sheep, suddenly now it is transferred into something that goes into your heart. That is what meditation is. Meditation is not reciting the verse over and over again. Meditation is not memorizing the scriptures. All those things might be useful. Meditation is when you begin to convert the information into a picture format and see it working in your life or see or see it yourself, see yourself living that scripture. Now it goes into the heart. It becomes part of your paradigm. It becomes part of your reality. It becomes part of your worldview. Suddenly now no other information begins to bother you because now you know the Lord is my shepherd. It is no longer information, it has become what? A reality within you. If you don't know how to convert God's word into a reality in your heart, God's word, you will use, you can memorize the whole Bible, but it will not produce fruit in your life. For example, if you take that one statement, no plague shall come near my dwelling. What does that mean? Have you seen it? You recite it, I don't know what it is. But if you have seen it in your heart, then it becomes a reality. Then coronavirus, no virus can touch you. This is what I discovered. I can, I have two choice. I can take the information that I'm watching in the news and meditate on that and see myself dying. Or I can take God's word in spite of whatever that is happening around me. I can see myself living. Then that becomes my reality because I've seen it. Then that scripture, the no plague shall come near dwelling becomes part of my reality. So it is the magic and miracle of the heart. This is the miracle of the heart. See when I have seen it in my heart, the heart begins to program every cell in my body to align to what that belief is. It sends an invisible wipe outside my body confirming my surrounding to align with what I see in my heart. You begin to live in peace though the whole world is falling apart in calamity. That is what Jesus said, you know, he who believes in me. He who believes in me. That's what it means to believe. He's not talking about mental agreement. He's talking about converting it into a heart belief. Once it becomes a heart belief, it becomes your second nature to live that scripture. You with me? That's why he says he who believes and baptizes will be saved. See when say you I present the gospel to you and you say, okay, I will, I will actually, I believe it. I'll go think about it. You haven't believed in your heart. Because the moment you believe in your heart and say, I want to get baptized. The baptism or going into the water and coming out is the proof that you're believing in your heart. If you say, I'll go think about it, let me just wander, let me just ponder about it, you know, and see if it, you know, you are intellectually considering it, it has not become belief. When you say I believe, it only seen as action. See when you say I believe that I am healed, then you just get up and walk, do things that you couldn't do. Whatever your body tells you. Because the heart simply projects you that way. Because once it's become a heart belief, you cannot contain it. It becomes the compulsion. When adultery enters into your heart, you cannot stop yourself from committing adultery. When murder enters into your, when anger enters into your heart, you cannot stop yourself from committing murder. It's in the pipeline. That's what God said when he sees anger, when he sees adultery in your heart. He said, you already committed adultery because God, for God, the reality is in your heart. Because it's just a matter of time you're going to, you're going to commit that. Do you see it? See this is the language of the heart and we need to understand these things. So I was saying this morning, what is a broken heart and what is a healed heart? So if you have missed, I think it is recorded, right? So please go and watch it and you will understand it because if you go back and do all those, I think we did two hours this morning. So I cannot go back and you know revise everything. But I hope you will get something good, you know, this evening. So we looked at Luke chapter four, verse 18. The Spirit of the Lord God is upon me and he has appointed me to preach the gospel to the poor. So I addressed, what is the gospel? What is the good news? It is not about taking, you know, getting a ticket to go to heaven. That's not the gospel. It is about the kingdom. We sang a beautiful song about the kingdom of God. It's the kingdom coming inside you. But where is the kingdom? Where is the kingdom? They asked Jesus, Lord, where is the kingdom? And Jesus said this, don't go looking for here. Don't go looking there. Luke 17:21, he said, the kingdom is within you. So he came to give us the kingdom. And how does the kingdom operate? If the kingdom is within me, how does it operate? Then he began to teach them parables after parables after parables, how the kingdom operates. In Luke chapter 12, round about 30th or 31st verse, he says, "All these things the Gentiles seek after, but you seek the kingdom and all these things will be given to you." Then he says, a bombshell of a truth. He says, "It is your father's good pleasure to give you the kingdom. Do not worry, do not fear, little flock, for it is your father's good pleasure to give you the kingdom." Then he says, "Sell what you have. Give arms. Do not have money bags that grow old." What is he trying to tell us? What is he trying to talk to us? See brothers and sisters, we have lived in the Adamic world system. That is what I was showing this morning. We have entangled ourselves in the Adamic, Adamic world. So our identity. Oh, did you rub it with tapatene? I think it's not writing because that means try the another color. Oh, give me a dry wipe, we can just wipe it off. Yeah, okay, this works. We already finished one marker that was, that's good. We're learning something and going something. So we saw how Adam and Eve got entangled. The color thirida brother, it's okay, you're able to see it? Okay, yeah, thumbs up, okay. So how generation after generation they came? People, they became, you know, when Adam and sin, they were entangled into a prison. This is the prison wall, okay? I'm going to tell you what that prison is. And generation after generation was born in the prison. Life became normal. Prison life is normal. We have learned to live life within the boundaries of the prison. So we define that as now life, but actually the Bible calls that as death. Bible calls it as death. So into this world, one man comes, one day, Jesus. He comes. He comes. Let's put a pink, pink Jesus, girls might be happy. Oh, this is orange. That pink. He had a different, I explained all these things in the morning, so I'm not going through that. If you, you're kind of wandering lost, forgive me. So into this world came Jesus who looked like everybody else, but nothing touched him. He was not worried about sickness, he was not worried about demons, he was not worried about poverty, he was not worried about nothing. His heart was what? In his, his heart was, his identity was God. He said, I came from the father. I go back to the father. Whereas everybody else's identity, identity is what? I am this, I am a son of this, I am a doctor, I am this, I am that. So as long as when your, when your heart has an identity connected externally, externally, what happens is you have a codependent heart, unhealthy, you don't know who, what you, you don't know who you are, you don't know what, what you are. So you think, I am a doctor, I am a rich person, I am a black, I am a white, I am this caste, I am that caste. So we seek to identify in external things. So we have a broken heart. A broken heart is a heart whose identity is rooted in the flesh. More precisely, we live in the body consciousness, that's what I want to talk about. So he came and his identity was not connected to anything else. He said, I am, because he said, I am. What, who are you God? He said, I am. Adam's identity was I am before his sin. After his sin, he fell and he lost that identity. Now he doesn't know where he is living. He is in a prison. What is the boundaries of this prison? Where is this prison Andrew? Let's go to the next point. He says, you know, he says to set the captives. The word captive means what? You're imprisoned. You are arrested. You are arrested where? You are arrested where? See your I am. Your I am. What you attach to next to I am is who you are. I am. I am what? I am a doctor. So that is your identity. I am uneducated, that is your identity. I am poor. Why do you, why are you poor? There is no money in my bank. There is no, I don't have a job. So I am poor, I am broke. I am rich because I have lots of money. So what you attach with I am becomes your heart belief, heart identity. Okay? So what is this prison? So let's to understand the prison, let's go to Romans chapter seven. And one of you can read the first seven scriptures. Ah, podham brother, that's enough, that's enough. Thank you. See Paul is trying to reveal a mystery here. For a long time I didn't understand this. What is he trying to say there? Thalaayavachinanda. One day I still cannot, I cannot profess to say that I fully understood it. Because Romans seven, see Romans six, up to Romans six, Paul is talking about the cross. Paul is trying to reveal the mystery of the cross, sorry. Can you see guys, this side? Can you see? You guys can see, yeah, you're okay. So up to Romans chapter six, he's talking about the cross. He gives the mystery of the cross. Okay, it's powerful. We'll touch some of those things if we have time today. Then in Romans chapter eight, he talks about the victory life of the son of God. But in the Romans chapter seven, he takes us through a confusion, a conundrum. Romans chapter seven is a progressive revelation. But in the first seven scriptures, he talks something about a wife that is married to a husband. On the position who is a road, he cannot marry another one. If she marries what? She will be an adulteress, she will be stoned to death. But if she, if he dies, if he dies, she is freed. She is freed from the law of the first husband, law of the marriage, law of the sin and death, law of the commandments. She is freed from that law. So that she can marry another person. Now if she marries, she will not be an adulteress. Correcta? Who is this wife? This wife, when in Adam, this wife is the I am. This wife is married invariably inevitably to the first husband, the body. Through which the senses operate. The, the wife said, because of Adamic sin, man indeed became flesh. Man could only interpret the world through the senses. He lost hearing God's voice in his heart. Now God has to come and speak to him through external signs and wonders. Watch this, what is happening? He is now interpreting the world through the senses which is operating on your body. In other words, the I am is entangled inside your body. The flesh man lives by the body. Maam samana manidur girl. That is the focus of their interpretation. How they interpret the life, the world around them is through the senses that operates in your body. Senses what? What you see, what you hear, what you touch, what you taste and what you smell. Through which you gather information and then you interpret it based on how everybody else is interpreting it. So this morning I was showing you how you're entangled into this matrix. Your identity is what everybody's identity. Your identity is no different from anybody else. Okay, then I showed how the death of Jesus freed you. How when you become a disciple, you know, you, you, you hate your father, your mother, your wife, your children. Jesus said, unless you hate your father, your mother, your wife, your children, your own self, you don't, you are not worthy of me. You cannot be my disciple. What is Jesus talking about? I explained this morning. So in the, this, when I think I am, the I am consciousness comes from where? From my body. But if I want to be married to another husband, the body has to die. That's what he's talking about. On the, on the street, she cannot marry another husband. That will be adultery in the eyes of God. So the body has to die. So brother Andrew, are you telling that I have to die in the body? That's exactly every religion does. Every religion does. Some people whip their body with what? Every man knows that they are entangled, they are captive to this body. They want to free themselves from the body. The money were galloped on the bank, male. Oh, yoga, they twist their body, they lie on nails, they, they, some people hang upside down. They lie, they lie on, you know, they walk on fire, they walk on, they try to torture the body to free themselves from the body consciousness. And we do differently. We do fasting, we do all sorts of, you know, things. But we cannot free ourselves. That's why this morning I was saying, you know, 40 days fasting, brother. Nothing delivers us from the body consciousness. There's only one thing that delivers you from the body consciousness. Death. Death. Brother Andrew, are you telling I should die? I have good news. Somebody already died. Likewise, you also reckon yourself dead to the law through the body of Christ Jesus. I think about fifth verse, sixth verse. Fourth verse, read it, please read it. The body of Christ. Now underline that word, the body of Christ. Every time the Bible talks about the body of Christ, you go and look at it from today, you will have a different, try to analyze it and try to ask the Holy Spirit, Lord, what does this body of Christ means? In taking communion, Paul said, if you don't discern the body of Christ. In communion, we are supposed to discern what? The body of Christ. If you don't discern the body of Christ, he says, you will bring condemnation. For this reason, many are sick, we can die. I've done about three and a half hours of teaching on communion. I've taken every scripture and broken it into piece by piece and given it, you know, what does it mean? We are supposed to discern the body. Why the death of Jesus? This morning I was showing how his death is my death. That's what Paul says, I am crucified with Christ. So when I contemplate and meditate on his death, I am releasing my consciousness, I am from my body consciousness into something else. Paul says, you are reckon yourself dead to the body through the body of Christ. So that you will be married to thee. So who is the first husband? The body of Jesus Christ. Who is the second husband? The risen Lord. Do you see it there? Now I'm in a Kpodirom. But who's the second husband? Do you see it? Did you get it? This is something that you know, I have to just blurb it out to the best of my abilities and I have to walk away simply. Because I cannot make you get the revelation by whatever it is. But tonight, if you are serious and you want to follow it up, go back and read this a million times. A million times, fast on it. Lord, show me what this means. But this teaching will help you to see it, to accelerate the process a little bit. I went to the forest in my, there is a woods nearby. I, I built a cross. I just hugged the cross and I said, Lord, I want to know. I want to know what this is. I found out the problem of my life. Somebody asked me, what is the biggest challenge of your ministry so far? I said, me. I am the problem. Because I interpret life based on what I see, what I hear, I have to die. So I don't know how to die. So I went to the forest every day in the morning, 4:00 AM I would go and spend about four hours. I built a cross and I hugged the cross. Lord, teach me how to die. What is the cross? Show me what is. I prayed and prayed and I prayed and begged and I prayed, God, Lord, show me this cross. Show me this, I want to know what this cross is all about. Because Paul got the revelation of who crosses. Do you know something about Paul's revelation? Paul did not come teaching about Christ because he learnt through Gamaliel or anything like that. Go to Galatians, I will show you that. Go to Galatians and read the first chapter, verse 11. Galatians 1:11. Next verse. That's for do. You know, what version is that? NKJV. Paul is saying here, the, the Christ that I preach, you know, this gospel that I preach, the message that I preach, nobody taught me. He goes on to say, it was God revealed. You read from 11th verse, read the 10th verse. Sorry, sorry, I think the verse is here. Read the 15th verse and the 16th verse. 15. Oh, watch this, listen to, listen to this carefully. But when it pleased, when I, when I plead, when, sorry, when it pleased God, who separated me from my mother's womb. And he called me through his grace. To reveal his son to me. To me. You can go to the theology college, you can study the Bible, you can listen to a sermon, you can get the revelation of Christ. That will be to you, not in you. Paul is saying, this message that I'm preaching, nobody taught me. It by the grace of God, when the time came, he revealed his son in me. And read the next one. That I might who preach? Him who's revealed in me. That is why nobody could shake him off. Brothers and sisters, when I was praying about the cross, Lord, I want to know Christ in me. I can read a book, I can listen to a sermon, I can understand Christ, what they, what is about. But I need to know Christ in me. If that becomes your prayer, I'm telling you, you will have a tremendous revival in your heart. Because the Holy Spirit wants to reveal Christ in you, not to you. Not to you would be intellectual, in you would be transformational of your heart. So Paul is talking about the second husband. See he's saying the first husband is married to the body. The I am consciousness is married to the body. So when I think about who I am, I, I, the information that I put next to the I am comes from what? From my senses. What I have been taught, what I have gathered, what I have acquired. But I have to die to that. I am crucified with Christ. The I am consciousness is crucified in the body of Jesus Christ. So that I may be married to another one who's raised from there, dead. So now Paul is saying, now when I think about I am, I don't think about I am based on who I am, based on my body. Now when I think about I am, I think, I think about I am based on who he is. Now his I am is connected to who? The risen Lord. So if I want to know who I am, I need to find where, I need to ask who. If, if Adam were to ask I am, Lord, who am I? Where will he ask? This morning I showed that, right? His identity was God. All the others were identity was outside. But after Adam sin, he lost his I am. Christ identity was who? God. He didn't say, I am a carpenter, I am Mary's only boy child. Engi Mele, do you know why? Because he knew, he found out from the word of God that he is from above. This morning I showed you, where are you from? Where are you from? The last number, John chapter one, verse 11, 12, 13. To everyone who believed in him, he gave the right to become the children of God. That they were born of what? Not of blood, not of the flesh, not of the will of the father, but from there, from above. You see, then that means my, in my spirit, man, I am married to the one who's raised from the dead. I am now disentangled from this conundrum. You see it now? So if I want to know eternity, who I am, I cannot ask my mom, I cannot ask my dad, I cannot ask my neighbors, I cannot ask my wife. I have to ask the Holy Spirit to show it in the word. That is what Peter is saying. You are not born of the corruptible seed, you are born of the incorruptible seed. You are born of the incorruptible seed. The word of God which lives and abides forever. See brothers and sisters, a Christian is not an ordinary person. That's what I'm trying to tell you. The Christian is not an ordinary person. Brother, but I know who I am, brother. Who are you? I am from Nagarkohil. I am for this jadi, I am that jadi. You haven't seen the cross yet. Because that I am is, is not yet crucified with, with Christ. The I am has to crucify with Christ. Now he says, Paul, I am crucified with Christ. No longer I live, but what? Christ liveth in me. In other words, he doesn't have life apart from Christ. And you know how John puts it? He says, and this is eternal life. This life is in the Son. He who has the Son hath life. He who does not have the Son does not have life. Then what does it have? Death abides in him. So all these people who are walking around living about, who are they? Dead. I showed you this morning how you are born again. When you believe that God raised Christ from the dead. When you believe that God raised Christ from the dead, his resurrection becomes your resurrection. You are, you are translated from this kingdom and plugged into a new kingdom. and plugged into a new kingdom inside your heart. You get it? So from that day onwards, I need to know who I am based on what the Father is teaching me from the Word. Not based on what my education is teaching me. Oh. Suppose, let me put it this way. You have a automobile accident. You slip into a coma. You wake up one month. And I'm, I'm a doctor, I'm intensive care specialist. So I have seen, I've seen patients, you know, in coma, treated patients in coma. Some people completely lose memory. When they wake up, they don't know where they are, who they are. You woke up from a coma. Now you ask, if you, how do you, how do you now talk to him? What will you tell him? He has forgotten his name. He's forgotten which family he belongs to. He's forgotten which, what is his education, what is his occupation. What do you do? You get what? The family members. Sit with them and show their photo album. "Hey, this is who you are." See, this is when you, you get married. They put lot of pictures of him around, you know, with this all loud ones. So that he wakes up and in trying to jog the memory. Brothers and sisters, we forgot who we were in Adam. We lost. We were plunged into a deep coma in Adam. We were plunged into a deep coma in Adam. In that coma, this is the world we are living in. This is who we are. And Paul says in Ephesians 5, "Awake to righteousness. Christ will give you light." Christ came to awaken us from this deep sense of loss of identity. Christ came to restore our identity back with God. So how does it do it? When I contemplate on the death of Jesus, this is the power. This, I cannot explain this, but you can experience it. When you meditate on the death of Jesus on the cross, somehow the "I am" gets disentangled from the body. I become one with him in, in, in my spirit. My consciousness, see the spiritual union, that your spirit and God's, the spirit of Christ were united at new birth. Okay, I showed you many scriptures. Galatians 5, chapter 5, verse 4. 1 Corinthians, chapter 6, verse 17. And on and on, there are many scriptures of that. He who is joined with the Lord is one spirit with him. And Paul said, "You cannot untex, you cannot intellectually understand this." But he said, "Reckon so inter. Consider it so." See, when he died on the cross, when he died on the cross, he died as you. You have to see this. When he died on the cross, he did not die for me, he died as me. See, when you say, "He died for me", that means he is dying there. Imagine there's a cross. Imagine there is a man hanging on the cross. And you say, "That man is dying for me." That means what? There is a distance, he is there, I am here. Right? But in God's eyes, he is dying as me. That means, "Where am I?" On the cross with him. That's the revelation Paul understood. "I am crucified with Christ." He did not say, "Christ is crucified for me." The church hasn't understood this reality. Because you thought Christ has died for me, it was a historical incident in your understanding. But when you, when you believe that Christ died as you, it is not a historical incident. It now is happening outside time. It is, it is happening at the realm of your heart. It is happening at the realm of your reality. See, the heart does not operate in time. The heart does not operate in time. Your mind operates in time. The mind understands past, present and future. For the heart, your belief is now. Now, it is always in the, in the realm of now. That's why, when you believe in your heart, it becomes now. You start acting on it now. It doesn't say what the body says. It doesn't say what the bank says. It starts to begin to plan the project. It starts to get up and walk. The body doesn't agree, the body will agree. The heart will change the body. There are many examples in the Bible where the heart was changed. The heart changed the body. One example is Caleb. At the age of eighty-five, he's saying, "I had the same strength when I was, as I was in the, as I was forty." Why? And Caleb gives you the answer. "Because I spoke what was in my heart." The heart simply arrested its strength at the age of forty. Why? Because he spoke that, he has to experience it. Oh, what's happening here? Brothers and sisters, when you believe the truth in your heart, it changes your perspective. It changes reality. It changes your paradigm. It changes your worldview. It becomes part of your reality. You no longer walk by sight. If you believe in your heart, you're healed, you're healed. Brother, but my body? See, the problem is, you know, we are entangled in the body. We go look in the mirror. See, when it, see, that is why, when you meditate on the cross, it somehow disentangles you from the body and comes, brings you alive in the spirit. Because now you're married to the one who's raised from the dead. I want to show you another important scripture. Go to Colossians, chapter 2. Read the 10th verse. We, we touched on this morning, but I want to show you something very powerful there. Mm-hmm. Read the next verse please as well. Hey, man. Hey, that is a mystery Paul is, Paul is trying to put in words something that cannot be explained. See, in the Old Testament, God gave circumcision as a sign of the covenant. He said to Abraham at the age of ninety-nine, "Circumcise." Okay? He didn't tell him at the age of seventy-five. We know the age of seventy-five, God says, "Get out of your father's house. You know, I'm going to give you a great nation and I'll make you a blessing and all that," he says. But he never tells him to circumcise. At the age of ninety-nine, he comes and says, "Abraham, I am El Shaddai." That's how the chapter opens. Genesis, chapter 17. "I am El Shaddai. Walk before me and be blameless. From now on, thou shall be called Abraham." You were called what? "Abraham." See, when the name is changing. See, 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 God sees the heart. He doesn't see. God doesn't, God zooms into the heart. God zooms into the heart and he sees what is the condition of your heart. He doesn't see the outer drama that we do. Outer makeup and outer white and white, no gold, all this drama he doesn't see. Or wear an Armani suit, you know, whatever drama you want to put, no problem. He zooms into the heart and he sees the heart. For him, reality is in the heart. You get it? He sees adultery in the heart. For him, you have already committed adultery. He sees anger in your heart. For him, you already committed murder. See, Jesus is taking the message of the Old Testament and applying it to the heart of the people. He found a way to communicate. He found a way to communicate the message so that it bypassed the intellectual process and goes directly into the heart. That is why he told them stories. Parables after parables, so that the people can understand and relate and get the information whom they want to. If they're interested, they want, they can get it. He spoke in a way that only those who are genuinely interested will get it. You understand? See, he sees, see, twenty-five years he's walking. No child. Twenty-five years walking. In Romans, chapter 4, Paul gives a revelation. He did not consider his body. Again, the word "body" is coming. Now, what is happening? You see, Abraham woke up every day and he's super in the body. But God said, "I will have a child." Said, "No, no, no, out of your body will come." Abraham, he found the secret. He disentangled himself from the body through the word of God. He did not consider his body and became weak in faith. But he became strong in faith. Giving glory to God. Romans, chapter 4, 17 onwards, you read it and see. What was happening in Abraham's heart? He was getting weaker and weaker and weaker and weaker. And everybody says, Abraham's heart, the reality is forming. Based on what? What God is promising. Until that happened, God, Abraham thought, he is considering what he can do in his, through his sensual body. But when the body died, he could have given up hope, but he did not. He continued to believe that he will have a child. He came to faith. God was waiting for him to come to faith. It took twenty-five years for him to come to faith. When God saw in Abraham's heart, now he believed. He saw himself as the father of many nations. Now God says, "Now I will change his name to a father of many nations." Then he says, "I will circumcise you now." The circumcision is, you know, imagine, I don't want to draw the private part because I'm, as a doctor, I can do it and not feel squeamish about it, but you might feel squeamish about it. Your heart is surrounded by a thick layer of flesh. Your heart is surrounded by a thick layer of flesh. This flesh is formed by what you see. He went beyond, he looked at the promise of God. He began to, he began to visualize. In other words, he tore open the flesh. He tore open the flesh and wrote God's word in his heart. He saw himself as a father of many nations. And God saw that. God is waiting for him to come to faith. Faith sees as reality what God has spoken. Not what the senses is telling. Faith tells you, "God has given me this project, God has given me the vision, it is done." And it talks as if it is done. It boasts as if it is done. It brags as if it is done. Because in Abraham's heart, he tore open that reality, the flesh is forming. And he only considered God's word till God words written in his heart. Then God says, "I am going to circumcise you." See, in the circumcision, something interesting happened. I'm going to come to Colossians 2. See, the, the part what God shows, you know, male private organ, you know, the tip of the male private organ, you know, the foreskin of the, you know, private organ is cut in circumcision. I have performed surgery, I have anesthetized people. It's one of the painful operation. Because the most sensitive part of a male organ of, in the male body is the, is the private organ. Especially the tip of the private organ. That's why it's covered by a foreskin. Then when the foreskin is cut, you're exposing the most sensitive part. Are you with me? What is God trying to show us? Hey, your heart, because of what Adam plunged us into flesh. Adam was a spirit led being. His heart was sensitive to God. But because of sin, it cut. Now his heart is only influenced by the flesh. So now he has to choose a man who will not, not walk according to the flesh, but according to the promises of God. Irrespective of what he sees with his eyes, he will continue to speak God's word in his heart. When he does it, what happens is, he is tearing the flesh influence on his heart and is writing the spirit influence on his heart. The circumcision is a way of removing the flesh and exposing the most sensitive part to heart, of your heart to God. So when a circumcised heart becomes a sensitive heart towards God. An uncircumcised heart is a, is a, in, desensitized heart towards God, it is only plunged by world's consciousness. In other words, it is hard towards God, but sensitive to the world. How do I tear that flesh open, come alive in the spirit? How do I do it? Paul explains that. Go back and read that 13th verse again. Wait, 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 okay, sorry, 11th verse, sorry. Okay, let's go through this slowly. "In him you are what? In him you are also circumcised with the circumcision made without hands." See, Jesus is dying on the body. He's tearing his body. He's what? He's tearing his body. In Hebrews, chapter 10, he explains it even better. It says, you know, "He tore the whale, which is his body," it says. He is tearing his body to release something that is inside, tangled inside him. His spirit. The spirit of Christ. The spirit of Christ was inside the body of Jesus. Are you with me? When the, when he was moving around as Jesus Christ, the spirit of Christ is inside the body of Jesus, where he could go, but he could not transfer that spirit to another person. He could not do that. For that to happen, he had to die. He had to tear open his body. His spirit will be released on the day of his resurrection. That's why the last hand became a life-giving spirit, I spoke this morning. Hope you're getting this truth, brothers and sisters. 11th verse, right? The circumcision of Christ. What do you mean by the circumcision of Christ? He's not talking about Jesus' private organ being circumcised. He's talking about Jesus himself being cut open and releasing the spirit of Christ. And everyone who believes in him, he gives that spirit inside him, calling, crying out, "Our Father." Do you see it now? Now, in your spirit, you're married to the second husband. Now, when you, this is the magic and miracle of the cross. When you go and meditate your union with him on the cross, when you contemplate and think and ponder about your union, somehow it disentangles your "I am" consciousness from your body. You no longer look at your body for "I am." You no longer look at your body says, "You know, I am sick." You no longer look at your bank balance and say, "I am poor." You no longer look at your circumstances and say, "I am weak, I am this, I am that, I am that." He became poor, that you may become rich. 2 Corinthians, chapter 8, verse 9. What is happening? He became poor. The poverty came upon him. He tore open the poverty, released the richness of the spirit of Christ into your heart directly, crying out, "Our Father." Therefore, when, when Christ, the spirit of Christ inside you, it doesn't matter what your bank balance is telling you. It doesn't matter what your paycheck is telling you. You are rich in him. Now you begin to believe in your heart that you are rich. See, all this is happening to make it, make this into your heart belief. When I consider Jesus Christ, my body is telling, "Oh, inga valigide." Then we ask the master checkup. When we ask, then we ask the Adamic people. What will the Adamic people tell you? They will tell you what they can see with their eyes. Blood test and all those things. The Adamic world can only see and give you a prescription. They can only, they cannot tell you who you are in the spirit. When the spirit of Christ comes, when the spirit of God comes, the world cannot receive the spirit. Jesus said in John, chapter 16. Why? Because it, it does not know him. For they do not see him. But you know him because he dwelleth in you. You know what he's trying to say? The spirit of God cannot be proved in your test tube. Cannot be proved in your, with your blood test. So when you go and ask the Adamic people, "Who am I?" They'll say, "Let me give, give you, let me do a blood test. Let me do a x-ray. Let me do a CT scan." "Oh, the CT scan says you've got cancer. I am cancer." What have you done? You've taken the "I am" and attached to your body. Now in your heart, you believe, "I am cancer." Because you believe, "I am cancer," the cancer cannot be healed. See, I've been a doctor for twenty years before I... See, I've been a doctor for twenty years before I hung up my boots, resigned. I have not seen a single dead body complain of cancer. I have not seen a single dead body complain of what? They have never healed a dead body. Brother, this, this person died this morning, but can you please treat the cancer? Because you know why? Do you know why? As soon as the body dies, the cancer, when it dies. As soon as the body dies, the heart attack is gone. No longer he's got heart attack. Hey? You're getting what I'm trying to say? You're getting what I'm trying to say? A dead body does not what? Complain. The dead body does not complain. The dead body does not complain of pain, depression, anxiety, nothing. That dead body is dead. So what? See, you know, as a doctor, I worked in cancer institute, A I R Cancer Institute. I've seen the atrocity cancer can do. It simply sits inside the body and sucks the entire energy of the body and keeps growing. That's why the patient gets emaciated, thin and weak and, you know, lose weight. And then the cancer is growing inside. The cancer is sucking life out of this, the patient. So who's keep, who's keeping the cancer alive? The patient. If the patient dies, the cancer has to die. What are you saying? If you want to get healed of cancer, die. That's my solution to you. But how do I die? The death has already been provided for you. You become one with him in his death. I am crucified with Christ. Do you see it? When you believe, "I am crucified with Christ," the heart does not talk, uh, logic. The heart does not understand logic. What you present to the heart, the heart simply believes. In other words, the heart believes for which it has the most evidence. You take the news, you take the Google research, you take that media, you take the worldly man's advice, you take the doctor's report, you take second opinion, third opinion, Google's opinion, all the opinion you take. You, you consider everything, you're presenting evidence to the heart. "I am sick, I am sick, I am sick, I am sick, I am sick." "This person had the same disease, he died, he died, he died, I am also died." You believe it in your heart. Your heart will bring it into manifestation. Your heart will believe for which you provide the maximum evidence. But the same time, if you cut out everything, I don't care what everybody says, I'm going to throw away the TV, I'm going to throw away everything. I'm going to take the God's word. I'm going to find evidence in the word. I saw him healed, he healed, she healed, he touched his garment, he, she got healed, he healed, he healed, Old Testament Newton, he was dead. You're providing a new evidence, which is beyond this reality of Adam. You keep on reading the word over and over and over and over again. These miracle stories over and over. I'm just setting some people free right now. Hey, throw the doctor's report out. Take the God's report, read it over and over, over again, till you come to the point, "I no longer look at my body." You come to the place where Abraham said, "As though my body is as good as dead, but he is written, he is written. I am healed by his stripes." You present that evidence to your heart over and over again. Your heart will latch on to it, it will believe it. And rest is history. Suddenly, why? Because you are now disentangled from body reality. You've killed your body. You see? That is the reason he said, "He who believes in me will cast out demons, will drink anything deadly, will not harm them. He will lay hands on the sick and they will recover." When Paul was fourteen days, he is in the shipwreck. The shipwrecks in the island of Malta, right? He, they have not eaten for fourteen days. They have not eaten for fourteen days. If we eat in the house, we can fast. If we eat in the house, we can eat. The wife will tell us. Brother, mom, soup, tea, no. If you eat three days, you can't eat. You eat three days, you can't eat. If you eat three days, mom, fast, tea, soup, liquid, liquid fast, solid fast. Mom, soup, egg, this is what we eat. You know, I'm doing it. I'm doing it. But for fourteen days, I'm fasting, eating. What is he doing? He's gathering sticks to set up a campfire for the rest of them. Theologians believe he is round about the age of sixty when he was going through that, right? What strength is he operating on? Do you see it? What nutrition he's operating on? I'll tell you what he's operating on. He learned to walk by the spirit, not by what his body is telling him. You think he, he didn't have any pain in his body? I'm sure he did. But he did not consider his body as a reality, boy, because he was connected to a higher reality. See, God's reality is true, but we don't know how to make it into our reality. That's why you need to meditate on his word day and night. You have to meditate on his word day and night. That's why he says, "He who meditates on this word day and night, he shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water." Even the year of drought, he will give, his leaves will not wither, Jeremiah seventeen. He will bring forth his fruit. Psalm thirty-four or thirty-seven, it says, you know, "In the year of, in the famine, the righteous man will be." The righteous soul will not famish even in the year of famine. Why? Because he is connected to a different reality. Because he sees a different reality, his heart will bring it into manifestation. This is the secret of the Old Testament Israelites. This is the secret of all the Elijahs, Elishas, Moses and David. They simply did not choose to walk by sight. They simply walked by faith. They brought Manna to Moses. They said to Moses, they, they come to Moses. Moses, we want bread, we want to eat. There is a gumball. A gumball that looks at you. Oh, we're going to eat. Oh, we're going to eat. Oh, we're going to eat. We're going to eat. Moses speaks, brother, tomorrow you will see bread. Tomorrow you will see bread. Tomorrow, Manna will come. What is it? Now, see, how Moses sees, how the children of Israel sees. He comes. He asks Moses, "Manna, what is this?" You know what Moses says? Read it. "This is bread." They saw Manna, but Moses sees. Do you get it? Everybody could not see bread, but God said, "You will see bread." Moses said, "I refuse to go by what I see." God said, "I will see bread, therefore this is bread." Do you see? Hey, everybody is saying you're sick, but God says, "By your stripes, you're healed." Now I'm going to say that. I'm going to believe it. I'm going to say it till I believe it. I'm going to believe it and I'm keep saying it. This is the secret of Christianity, not to walk by what you see. If I don't walk by what do I, what, what I see, what is my point of reference? See, this word, in the gumball, the point of reference is what? What they see? You want to get it? They give opinions, random control trial. Huh? Random control trial. They do research on the body. They cut open the anatomical body. You know, I've done the anatomical dissection. They do blood tests, you know, blood trials. They do drug trials and blood tests and, you know, they are continuously looking in the scene realm and producing a result to us, saying that this, if you have this symptoms, this problem, this problem, this is who you are. God says, "You died to that system in the body of Christ." Therefore, they cannot see what they cannot see. But you can see through the promises of God, something that they cannot see, which your eyes deny. So now you can sell your heart, "I can see clearly that I'm healed." How? Because I am married to the one who's raised from there. Dead. So what happens is, when you consider the cross, when you consider your death, see, what, this is a statement, I want you to get it. When you consider, "Your death, your memory, your memory, you saw it." "You have a fear of it." Why? Your death is in the past. That's why I'm telling you, for a Christian, there is no death. Brother, you're talking about death. No. No, 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 no. I live in this body to finish my assignment, then I leave this body, keep on living. I live now and I keep living. Do you see it? What is eternal life? Eternal life is not living forever. The word life is zoé. The word life is, the Greek word is zoé. The word zoé means the quality of life possessed by the one who gives it. So God possesses a life. He is the source of life. He is the beginning and the origin of life. In him, there is no death. He is light, he is life. And that life, he gives it to us. And that word is zoé. The word eternal means the vital force that sustains that realm in which that quality of life exists. The word eternal means, the Greek word, if you go study it, the root word means, the vital force, which has got no beginning, no end, but that sustains that realm in which the quality of God's quality of life exists. So when I say, "I have eternal life, this is eternal life." You know, "He who believes in me will have eternal life." God so loved the world that he gave what? His only son, that whosoever believeth on him should not perish but have. Eternal life is not me living forever after I die. Eternal life is something that I possess it now, but in my spirit. Are you with me? Are you with me? It is not living forever, it is not the quantity of time, it's the quality of time, in which time doesn't exist. Eternal life is not living forever. Eternal life means it's a realm which is outside time. Your heart is existing, your spirit man is connected outside time. Do you see it now? So when I say, when I believe that God raised Christ from the dead, what am I saying? I have, I possess eternal life. That same life that Jesus possessed, the same life that God possessed, is now inside me because I'm united with Christ. But I can't feel it, I can't touch it, I can't see it. But I can experience it if I can persuade my heart. That's the secret of Christianity, brothers and sisters. See, we live every day looking at externally. That's called external consciousness. We are happy. Bank money. Ah, now we plan. Ah, doctor said it. Report is good. See, we are dying every day. When we live by sight, we are dying every day. But when you see in your death, "Your memory, your death, your death," the fear of death goes away. You know what Satan does? He wants you to look at your body and live. Every day you wake up, what you wake up to? The senses bombard you. From the morning you wake up, "I'm going to sleep." "I'm going to sleep." "I'm going to sleep." "I'm going to sleep." Huh? "I'm going to sleep." "Brother, do you have a job?" "Do you have a sick leave?" See, I refuse to live by what my body is telling me. Why? Because I'm considering my union with Christ over and over and over and over and over and over again, day and night, till that becomes my reality. You want to escape from this life called death, meditate on the cross. That's why I gave you the exercise this morning, right? The death of Jesus on the cross before you go to sleep, and the resurrection of you in his resurrection. Do you see it? So the circumcision of Christ means, Christ is cutting open the foreskin and releases the sensitive part of him, the spirit. And that spirit is poured out into my heart, crying out, "Abba Father." So when I contemplate on the death of Jesus, what is happening is, I am removing the flesh influence on my heart. Now I am letting my heart, which is my spirit man, come alive towards God. Let's go to Romans six and read a couple of verses there. And, you know, time is running out. This, Romans six, verse five, let's read from verse five.
For if we have been united together in the likeness of his death, certainly we also shall be in the likeness of his resurrection.
Watch, wait. Sorry, if you have King James Version, it'll read like this. If you're planted together in the likeness of his death. The Greek word is symphotos. In the Bible, the entire Bible, that word symphotos appears only one time. It is here. Okay? If you are united together. Paul is trying to say things, this mystery of Christ, this mystery of our union with him, this mystery of abiding in the wine. He's trying to maximum, he's maxed out his every language he could use. He picks up a word that cannot be used anywhere else. In the Greek literature, that word is so difficult to use. The word is symphotos. The English translation does not even cut it close to what Paul actually is trying to say. If you're planted together in the likeness of his death, you're planted together means what? If you are united together. Planted together, united together. N K J V. Ah, united together. Two words. The best I have tried to understand this is, "Chappadimav." If you know, you'll understand. "Chappadimav," you say. "Chappadimav," you're making. "Need," you're making. "Put," you're making. "A ball," you're making. "A pot," you're making. "Meat," you're eating. "All of them, we're eating." "We're cooking food in the fridge." "We're cooking in our house." "You know, we're cooking in our house." "We're cooking in the fridge." 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 "Mixing," you're doing. "You're cooking, brother." "I'm a brother." "He's doing it." "I'm a brother." "We're cooking." "We're cooking." "We're cooking." "We're cooking." Do you know what happened to the molecule level? Gelatin to gelatin has become one. That is the word symphotos. You're planted together in the likeness of his death. Do you see it now? His death is your death. His death is what? Your I am identity is completely absorbed into his death. I don't have an I am identity. I don't know who I am apart from Christ. Do you see it? I am planted together. I am so dead, 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 dead. I am so dead, I'm dead. I'm so dead. When you consider the death of Jesus on the cross, this is what is happening in your internal system. See, what do you want? "Brother, I'm going to marry." "I'm going to marry." "After that, we'll do it." Ah, I'm going to ask. Good friend, I'm leaving. Why? Because, watch this, your mind cannot understand reality. Mind operates in time. When you consider the death of Jesus in your mind, it is an event in history. Two thousand years ago, he died for me. But when you see yourself in him, it is happening outside time. It is happening now. In your heart, it is a reality now. Do you see it? At least trying to get it. You are planted together. If you're planted together, so to experience resurrection, to experience resurrection, I need to see my death in his death. Colossians, Romans thirteen, third chapter, first verse.
If then you were raised with Christ, seek those things which are above, where Christ is sitting at the right hand of God.
Keep reading, sister.
Set your mind on things above, not on things on the earth. For you died and your life is hidden with Christ in you.
For you? Died. This is what we can't understand. The church hasn't understood this. Because you haven't understood your death, you think you're alive. Because you think you're alive, you think I am a nadar, I am a doctor, I am an engineer, I am a black, I am uneducated, I am poor, I am rich, because you think you're alive. But when you sit in a dead body, when you bring a dead body here and you pour the dead body, tell me who you are, what the dead body will tell you? What is that body called? It's called living sacrifice. Now read Romans chapter 12, verse one. This is what Paul is trying to tell us there. Therefore, brother and I beseech you by the mercies of God, present your bodies as which is your reasonable service to God. Therefore, you know what? Do not be confirmed to this world, but be transformed. You see brothers and sisters, without presenting your body as a living sacrifice, you cannot change, renew your mind. All the positive, you know, life coaches, life gurus, positive thinking, positive thinking, positive confession, yoga meditation, think about good things. Everybody cannot produce fruit in your life, why? They have only one point of reference called the body. They can help you a bit, they cannot bring transformation, why? Their only point of reference is body. But Paul says, present your bodies as a living sacrifice. What does it mean? It means I no longer live by the dictates of the body. So how do I live? I live by the faith of the Son of God. What does that mean? I live by what the spirit is showing me in my heart through the word of God. I put that on as my reality. Put off the former conduct of the old man, which grows corrupt according to the deceitful lust. Be renewed in the spirit of your mind. Put on the new man, which is created in true righteousness and holiness. Can you see what Paul is trying to tell us? Paul is saying, hey, present your bodies as a living sacrifice. Here is our problem. We present our bodies as a life. We look at our body, we keep thinking about our body and then we try to renew our mind. It does not work. It will never work. Paul says, if Christ be in you, Romans eight, verse 10. If Christ be in you, the body is dead because of sin. But the spirit is life because of righteousness. And then he goes on to say, the same spirit that raised Christ from the dead, if he dwelleth in you, he gives life to your mortal body through his spirit who dwells in you. Therefore, you are dead as not to the flesh to walk according to the flesh, but according to their spirit. But those who live according to the flesh shall die, but those who live according to the spirit shall live. Then he goes on to say, as many as are led by the spirit of God, these are called the sons of God. See, that verse has been misunderstood, you think, you know, I'm led by the spirit of God. No, I am led by who I am in the spirit, not than who I am in my body. Do you see? The captivity, the prison is your body. When you live by the pains and the aches and the body and look at your body, oh, I need to get healed, I need to get healed. You are now keeping the body alive in your heart. It is not a dead body. A dead body does not respond. You show nice pornography pictures to a dead body, the dead body does not respond, it is dead. It is dead. Paul says, present your bodies as a living sacrifice. I, how do I get that brother? Close your eyes and look at your death on the cross. You are planted, when if you're planted together in the likeness of his death, surely, surely you shall be also. Ed the parting a three P, Romans six, verse five. See, when you read this, you'll suddenly think, oh, no, his resurrection has already happened. Can you see? Paul is giving us the clue how to experience resurrection power. To experience resurrection power in my life, first I need to consider myself dead. How do I do it? I meditate in his death, I am dead. When I meditate in it, my I am, who am I is dead. Who I am, what he says I am comes alive. That's what John goes on to say in one John four seventeen. He says, you know, herein love has been made perfect, that you may have boldness in the day of judgment. Because as he is, so are we in this world. He didn't say as he is, so will be when we go to heaven. What these guys understood is that, you know, they understood that they died with him, that life is finished. That is why in the Bible, nowhere in the New Testament, you will see, the New Testament writers never wrote such a statement. No, you'll not see because they didn't have an identity. They did not have an identity outside Christ. Every day they woke up as Christ. Every day they walked as Christ. They, the world looked at them. Let's call them Christians. You see what is happening? In the soul, they were experiencing by, by, by focus and attention and awareness, they created the union that was already happened in the spirit, alive in the soul. They did not consider what the body is telling them. But what happened is power began to manifest in their life. Power began to manifest in their lives. Why? Because the spirit is not simply some, I'm not talking some infatuation, I'm not talking some positive fad. I'm talking reality, God's reality. Keep reading, read the six two words. Do you see? Again, the word body comes. The body of sin, the body is where sin prevails. The senses is where sin operates. But when I see my death, when I'm planted together in the likeness of his death, knowing this, that my old man, the dead spirit that I received from Adam is gone with Christ. Can you see it now? Into the body of Christ, my body is his body now on the cross. See, that is why when you take communion, when you take that bread and say, Lord, this is the body that was broken for me. You see, you got to visualize the body of Christ in that. That's, that's why I believe Catholics are more right in the, in the way they take communion, Eucharist. You know what? Actually, factual data, according to latest data, more Catholics gets healed. Healing ministries, healing happens in Catholic churches more than all the Pentecostal churches put together. Because of this, they see the death of their body. You go read communion, one, one Corinthians, chapter 11, verse twenty-three to thirty-two, read it and see and pay every word attention what Paul is saying. My goodness, we missed communion all these years. Why? We take an inventory of the flesh instead of seeing it dead with him. Those who belong to Christ have crucified their flesh with his passions and desires, Galatians five twenty-five or twenty-four, somewhere around. Keep reading Pratima, we'll, 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 we'll finish, time's up. He who's died is free from sin, gone.
Knowing that Christ, having been raised from the dead, dies no more. Death no longer has dominion over him. For the death that he died, he died to sin once for all.
And the life. See, you cannot intellectually grasp this. But you can accept this or reject this. Paul says, reckon yourself, consider it so. See, Christ who's raised from the dead, he dies no more. In other words, he's overcome death. I'm, I am in union with him. Therefore, the fear of death is gone from my heart. Do you see it now? The fear of death is the root of all fears. The fear of death is the root of all fears. So am I saying you should not take, go to a doctor? No, I'm not saying that because you, you, you may not have grown to that level of faith yet. Okay? So if you have a pain, you have this, you know, you are in this medication, that medication, you go to the doctor, get it checked. But this is what I'm telling you, but don't believe that as the only reality, but there is a higher reality. You can learn to meditate and connect with that reality so, so much so, you then said you disentangle from this reality. Thank you, doctor, you have done your part, thank you very much for your help. I'm healed. You are now connected to the higher reality, you've seen it in your heart, you believed it in your heart, now you act healed. The doctor scratches, he says, what are you, what are you crazy man, you're gonna die. I have already died. I'm already dead. Read Hebrews chapter two, verse fourteen and fifteen. Over and over and over again, the Bible is scattered with this truth, but somehow we missed it. Hebrews chapter two, verse fourteen. Can you see? All of our life you are subject to bondage, to who? Satan. Through what? The consciousness of body. So Jesus had to become sin on the cross. He was walking in the spirit when he was alive, but he had to die. He who knew no sin became sin on the cross. Can you see it now? He became partakers, he became like us on the cross. He became the last Adam. What does it mean? That means there is no more Adams after Christ. He died as the last Adam. He rose as the head of the new creation. And everyone who believed that God raised Christ from the dead is baptized into him. Who are you now? You are a new creation in him. You see? You don't walk by sight, you walk, you don't walk by what the body is telling you, you don't walk by what the senses is telling you. You don't plan your life based on your finances, you don't plan your life based on your doc, your school report on your children. What's the problem? Atomic world. Do you see? See it now? We live in this world, we entangle ourselves in this world, we treat our children according to the world and then we pray. You know, that's an very ungodly prayer, why? What do you think God will do? You go and say, God, please heal me, what do you think God, what do you ask, you know what you're asking God? God, please raise Christ from the dead. That's what you're asking. He said, I've already done that. I've already done that. The, the question is, am I going to believe it? Persuade my heart into that reality? See me living in that reality? See my body recovering in that reality? Then I will experience it. Or I can keep on begging God and die. What do you think God can do? Brothers and sisters, he stands alone risen and everyone who believes is baptized into him. So he is me. He is you. You receive the spirit of Adam in Adam, now you receive the spirit of Christ in Christ. You have translated from the kingdom of darkness, the kingdom of senses, the kingdom of Adam, the kingdom of flesh into the kingdom of light, into the kingdom of the Son of God, into the kingdom of righteousness, peace and joy in the Holy Spirit. Now we learn to walk after the spirit, not walk after the senses. So he said, I've come to set the captives free. Who are the captives? The captives are people who are walking by senses. Every day they wake up and say their heart is healed now because they are in union with God. Correct? I, I showed it to you the first point this morning. Now, but they're learning to walk by senses. You're walking, you're considering the facts of this life. They are not lies, they are facts of this life. You are now in captivity, in the prison. I can live in this body, but not of this body. In other words, I can live in this world, but not of this world. Why? I began to reinterpret life based on what my father has promised in his book. I read that scripture this morning, Thru Peter, chapter one, verse three and four, you know, by these you've been given exceedingly great and precious promises, that you may become partakers of the divine nature. I want to have the, I want to experience the divine nature in my spirit, I want to see it in my manifestation, what do I do? How do I resolve problems? How do I look at life? How do I face life? I live by the faith of the Son of God, I live by what my father has promised. I take the promises of God, I consider it over and over again till my heart believes it. When my, when my heart believes it, my emotions will bear witness. When do you know you're believing it in your heart? Your emotions will tell you. Why? Because you're looking at another reality inside your heart, it's already paid. Uh, but what, how will I get the money? It's not your problem. Suddenly you will get a, an extra, an additional work. An additional project. That's how he, he reads you. Do you see? How he brings that money is not your problem, it's his problem. But I've seen the end result even before I saw that. Can you see? I'm seeing the end result ba, based on the promises of God, I am free from captivity. Every night I can go to sleep in peace. Tomorrow what will happen? Who cares what tomorrow? Tomorrow my father is there, I'm going to go to sleep. That's why Jesus said, do not worry about tomorrow. You see, this is what Jesus is trying to teach us in Matthew, chapter five, six and seven. He's trying to teach us in the Beatitudes, the, the life and the picture of the kingdom of God. He is not talking about heaven, he said, broad is the way, many will walk in it, but narrow is the way, the few will find it. He's not talking about going to heaven or hell, he's talking about living in the kingdom now, only few will find it. The rest will walk after the senses and keep begging God, praying to God, persuading heart. Brothers and sisters, there is nothing there for me to persuade God, but there is everything for me to persuade my heart. That's why the Bible said Abraham, when he fully persuaded his heart, he came to faith. He came to set the captives free. Hey man, there is two more points, it's a long sermon. We will touch maybe tomorrow, we will touch tomorrow evening, not in the morning, tomorrow, that two more points is there, isn't it? Set the, he can heal the broken heart, set the captive free, to open blind eyes, to liberate them that are oppressed. So that you will end up in the year of Jubilee. Brothers and sisters, there is a year of Jubilee available for us now. It's the year of rest. In, that's the year of no fear. There is no free from debt. I'm telling you a secret, what I showed this morning, go to the cross. I don't know how to change, but consider your death in his death. Every day, every day, every day, every day, spend time meditating on the cross. Bring, visualize the cross, hang on the cross in him, die with him, buried with him, in the morning risen with him. This morning I taught you, right? This morning. Ah, this will change the inner realities. Suddenly the Bible will become a new book. When I began to understand this, the Holy Spirit, when I began to do this exercise, I've been doing this almost for two years, I've been doing it. I said, Lord, I need to die, I don't know how. I found out I am the problem. I am the problem. I am the challenge, that I am has to die, I don't know how. And I erected the cross, I, you know, I did all sorts of crazy things, I want to die, Lord, show me how to die. Then finally God began to show me. When I began to die, this is not like one time death, it's an everyday, that's why he said, take up your cross daily. Do you see? Keep your death alive. It's an oxymoron statement. Keep your death alive in your consciousness, I am dead to this world, in his death I am dead. Therefore, in my awareness and consciousness, I come alive to who I am in the spirit. When I come alive to whom I am in the spirit, my spirit is sensitive to God's voice. Suddenly my spirit becomes sensitive to his promises, his promises are more real to me than what I see with my eyes. Do you see now? If you don't consider his death, if you don't consider your death in his death, what happens is you will know the promises, but you won't be sensitive to it. The doctor's report, you'll be more sensitive to the doctor's report, you'll be more sensitive to the, what the bank is telling you. You'll, you'll be more sensitive to what your project manager or your business partner is telling you. Do you see? But I want to become sensitive to what God is saying, but how do I get there? Not by memorizing scriptures, more memorization, nothing will help. Yeah, memorization is good, you know, it's good, but then I need to see my death. When I am dead, I'm come alive in the spirit, I become one with him in the spirit, I become one with the risen Lord. Suddenly all the promises are suddenly now becomes real in my heart. Suddenly I want to know, Father, I am facing this situation, I opened the book, ah, it's finished, done.